Call the meeting to order at 8:08. We have everyone in attendance except our student board member. Public comments for session. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. We will now adjourn to closed session.
Thank you.
Testing, legal mic testing. Podium right, podium stage right, podium stage right. Podium stage left, podium stage.
Testing, legal mic testing. Okay, we will reconvene to public session at nine twelve. Attendance, we have everyone present today, including our student board member. Ms. Harvey, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand and place your right hand over. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Go move.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda passes, all right. Public comments. Pursuant to Board Policy Number twenty-three fifty, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. And do we have, we have two public comments. This time, I'd like to call on Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, happy holidays. Revenue is not everything in a corporation. Now, of course, you know, in another sense, it is everything because without revenue, you can't have a company. Steve Jobs' focus was build something great and the revenue is going to come. So he had a tumultuous career as a CEO because with that philosophy, if you don't nail a product, then you don't have the revenue to support the company further. You're ousted, so on and so forth. So similarly, enrollments are not everything. And yet enrollments are everything because we're here to serve the students and this institution exists to provide an education to students who enroll. The analogy is when the focus is on people, when the focus is on employees, then the students are going to come. When there's an inordinate focus, say, on a stock price and your goal is increase the stock price, increase the stock price, then you stop treating humans like human beings and what they are are cogs in a wheel. Employees are not cogs in a wheel, students are not just numbers. And my concern with our focus on FTEs is that we're losing sight of the fact that this is an institution of human beings. We make decisions such as the following. We put faculty on involuntary paid administrative leave. And then that leaves a gap in a teaching assignment that other instructors have to, you know, struggle to fill. And then they're stressed out and then the students have an education that's of lower quality than what would have happened if that faculty were present. And then the thing about it is, is there's other options. So yes, you know, we have, there's discipline issues, there's complaints, we have to look into these. But there's options where we can resolve these matters and still ensure that we have an institution that respects human beings and where students get the education they deserve. We, other decisions are made when we're cogs in a wheel and students are numbers. For example, we closed the campus on opening days where, since I was here since 2012, we've always had campus closed Fridays, you know, the opening days and fall and then spring. What that does when we, when we close the campus is we actually make an investment into humanity, into human being, into people. We make a statement of equality. We say, we have this event, the campus is closed. It's open to all faculty, not just instructional faculty, but non-instructional faculty. It's open to students because it's a celebration of students and their achievements, their past achievements and what's upcoming in the future. It's open to staff where they come in as human beings and on this one day that's, we all come together, we celebrate together what we've achieved and what we are going to achieve in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Mr. Lou Walker? Miss, I apologize.
And there's a, there's a microphone on that side. You don't have to make your way around.
I am a community member and a student here at Animal Valley College. I am also an advocate. I've been with the NVC here and I am bringing the National Action Network out here as well. And you'll see us officially here. I have several.
Can you speak directly into, stay in, at the microphone, maybe take it off if you're going to, you want to face the audience because you're, we lose you.
I'm going to take it off.
Okay.
Extra thirty seconds?
I'm pausing it while you're.
I have had challenges the past two years just getting information on the law scholars program. And I started looking at that because of the issues in the cases that I've been following out here over the past ten years. I was at the Department of Veterans Affairs as an employee there. I also taught as a contracted sub for Laco while I was working for the Department of Veterans Affairs. So I do have experience with seeing how systems work, county, state processes. And I definitely do see there is a need for transparency in the information that's provided, especially for students trying to reach the law scholars program. I have reached out personally through email and I have documented just trying to get administrative information. And I did get an alarming response from one of the advisors that the reason why information has not been made available in public events, poppy festivals. It's because he's working on a PowerPoint. I have sent about at least five other black women who asked for this program and they have been misguided. So I just want to give you a sneak peek of what I can help this school do is to do be respectful and be knowledgeable about the shortcomings of your programs and the availability of information. That's everything I have to say today.
Thank you. Okay, we have some presentations this morning. I'd like to, we have nothing to report. Closed session today. Okay, we have some presentations this morning. Constitutional essay contest winners. Mr. Bento, is that? I had a feeling it was you.
Hey, I just hope that you guys are all having a wonderful day. I just wanted to come before you to thank you so much. We asked our students, why is it important to study the Constitution? And why is civic knowledge important and how does that affect our democracy? And that question elicited many different responses, many different students. We had over seventy-five students answer this question. And we had a diverse group of faculty answering, reviewing these essays. And I'm pleased to present to you the five winners. The first, the first one is Leah Rigani. She is not here today, couldn't be here. But we also have Anthony Estrada, as you already know. And then we have Aiden Katz, a sorority student studying nursing. And then we have Charles Greer, the fourth, who is a sophomore here at ABC. Plans on transferring to UC and wants to be a lawyer. And then we have Colton Beardsley, everybody, who is also a, last year at ABC. And two is interested in transferring to UCs and pursuing something in public interest. And so, and I just wanted to let you know who these wonderful students are. It's always great. I will tell you that some of them dabbled in some very interesting responses using quotes from Taylor Swift to inspire civic engagement. Talking about Federalist Papers and even citing people like Charles Darwin. So it was a very interesting, fun read for us as a group. And we really enjoy this and we're really grateful for people like Dr. Jill Zimmerman to keep this event continuing. Appreciate Patty's patience with us to facilitate this as well. So everybody, I just wanted to give you, certain students, can you all turn around and face the audience real quick? Thank you so much. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you and congratulations, students. Awesome job. Okay. At this time, we will have an end of semester update.
Thank you, trustees. We'll get the PowerPoint up for the end of semester update. The executive team is very pleased to sort of give this mid-year review to the board. Go ahead and advance to slide one, please. We wanted, we want to provide this check and balance so that we can show the progress that the institution is making toward the board goals. And to remind everyone, the board enacted its strategic priorities to prioritize enrollment and growth to make sure that we are emphasizing and creating currency in our board policies and procedures that embrace and reflect our mission, vision and values. Community interactions are one of the board priorities as well as developing workforce development. I'm really pleased with our Strategic Planning Committee and our, our campus as a whole for embracing our new strategic framework. We've had many conversations about how most colleges talk about master plans or strategic plans. And there's a whole lot of reasons why the term master plans is not an effective metaphor in 2023. Not the least of which, there's social implications, right? There's, there's some oppression embedded in that word that isn't helpful. It doesn't inspire creation. It doesn't motivate. But also, if you're an engineer by training, you know that the master is the thing that you can't change. And, and being fixed doesn't work in higher education in 2023 and beyond. And so who are we? Who are we as a college? Our Strategic Planning Committee adopted the framework of AVC serves as our strategic planning framework. And the serves is an acronym that stands for students, equity, resources, vision, education and success. And all of our strategic plans, whether they be our education service plan, our facility service plan, our IT service plan, our equity plan that we submit to the state, guided pathways, the things that we're doing with accreditation, as well as achieving the dream. All of them unfold into AVC serves. And so I would like to invite the members of the executive team that will be presenting to come. And I believe Dr. Bakit, you'll be going first. And to our helpers in the back, would you please go ahead and activate the dashboard? No.
Just tried this again. Hello. Good morning. I hope you're having a great morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this update with you, what you're seeing on the screen. And thanks to the Office of Institutional Research is the latest tool that we are using to track enrollments and head counts. So as of today, as you can see, I know it's small, but we have gone over the three thousand count on full-time equivalent students and over nine thousand in terms of the head count. If you, nine thousand head count is two thousand more head count students, essentially more than what we have had in spring twenty-three. Right there. So, so that is, that's just the, you know, one piece of it. And I'm going to switch to the, to the slide. Thank you for your patience. And so I tried to capture.
You have a clicker now.
Okay, thank you. I just tried to capture the trend of in, you know, in comparing fall twenty-three to fall twenty-two in FTS head count and sections, as you see on, on the chart right there. And in, in terms of FTS, we are up about seventeen percent. Those numbers are not final. We will be tweaking them as we gather positive attendance data. So we're hoping they'll be even higher. In terms of head count, we're up seven percent. In terms of sections, we're up six percent. I want to highlight the work of the faculty, the chairs, the deans and the academic affairs staff in being agile and responsive to student demand. So for example, in fall twenty-three, which is just the one semester I've been leading this office, we've been able to add over a hundred sections to, to meet the student demand. And so that's, you see the results of it up there. And then looking at spring twenty-three to spring twenty-four, we're about to start when, spring twenty-four in January. You have forecasts right there. We're hoping, optimistic that we're going to be meeting the forecast. If we end up over the fifty-one hundred in terms of FTS, that will put us thirty-six percent growth. And head count, again, forecast thirty-five percent. Sections, we may be at ten percent growth. As of this morning, I just received the report. We just added eight sections to the areas that have wait lists. And one of the deans is working on three more. And so that's something that we intend to continue to do between now and maybe even through the beginning of January because we're hoping to add late start sections. And in the process, we have to hire faculty and identify spaces and pull people together from all sides of campus to make this happen. And I'm very grateful for the collaboration of everybody involved in this. We're not just bringing students on campus and enrolling them. We're also working hard so that they persist, they stay and they are successful. And so there is a highlight and expansion of the services, tutoring services at the Learning Center. We are extending the, the support services in general through the Achieving the Dream initiatives, guided pathways, success teams to embed counselors in the divisions. We are offering classes in a pathway format where the students can go to the Palmdale Center and take a full degree at the Palmdale Center. So we identified so far at least three, four degrees, including business, administration of justice and maybe more. Again, thank you for approving the full-time faculty positions, adjuncts and full-time faculty positions. And we're aiming to expand dual enrollment, internships and project-based learning. And thank you to CSU Bakersfield, also that partnership that we're hoping to grow in the engineering area to support also the CTE area. So there is a lot more. I know I'm limited in time. I appreciate your attention and to be continued. Thank you.
There's a remote on the, yeah.
Good morning. I'm here to tell you just a brief highlight because I know we don't have a lot of time. I want to highlight a couple of things. We're actively recruiting. We had a wonderful recruitment event in late November where, where we included for more registration. We had over four hundred and one students attend. We're continuing to plan for spring to have more of these recruitment special admit. So more, more of those to come. We also are recruiting for, and recruiting is underway for all the special programs that are listed up there. Our basic need center has been very busy. We have over two thousand new applicants receiving basic need services. We are not only just doing them across broader market, but for, you know, not just twice a month, but we're now they're available to go in there and get food every single day of the week, as long as, you know, during the work hours of the office. So we're very actively serving students. December fifth, we had a wonderful event for our students that had children. And we had an extravaganza where we had, we had projected over a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and nine came and we served three hundred students. Also, we're working with LA County CalFresh to have workshops and tell our students about the opportunities for CalFresh program. And I also have been working hard with the counseling team, ITS and marketing and all those that need to be involved with it, Edinav. So the update, I want to just give you some information on just November's numbers. We had over nine thousand unique student logins using Edinav. And we had a total of successful registrations of thirteen thousand. And our customer service score on a level of one to five on students' experience with Edinav is a four. So we are working very hard. There's still a lot of things that need to be worked out. We're going to be working with Edinav for a scribe position and working, continuously working with the counseling team. And I want to thank them for their leadership. We continue to meet weekly and so we'll have more news for you in the upcoming months and the new year. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm happy to report that our quick-to-market advertising campaign was a resounding success. Over the course of the campaign, we had one point three million impressions over digital and social media. We got almost twenty thousand clicks on our digital and social media advertising. That would be through Google search and display ads as well as Facebook and Instagram advertising. And as you can see in the slide here, we had some really strong numbers. In our digital ads, we had over seventy thousand impressions in our biggest month and over four thousand clicks. And that was just in our biggest month. And so we generated over twelve hundred leads. And those leads were generated through three targeted landing pages that targeted students, traditional students interested in transferring and graduating, students that were interested in career education, as well as Spanish speakers that were interested in ESL classes and basic skills courses. And so as you can see, the social media ads performed really well as well. Our peak month, we received over one hundred and fifty thousand impressions, seven hundred and eighty clicks. So the calls to action in those ads were to either apply now or to fill out the information so that we could get their name and their number so that we can call them back or email them back and loop them in with all campus communications, invite them to events like the registration event. And the social media ads also generated dozens of leads for us. In addition to that, we had our outdoor campaign that started about a month before the digital and social media advertising. And so we had our Around AV buses throughout the year, which generated one point three million every four weeks. So that would be sixty-eight million total impressions throughout the campaign, as well as our billboard and bulletin poster advertising that we had off the fourteen freeway. So people could see the college on their way out of the valley, on the way into the valley. And then also throughout the community, more targeted messaging in, in various parts of AV. And so as you can see there, the numbers are also very strong. But I just want to also highlight the fact that in addition to all the core data that we have on the performance of the advertising, it's important to consider the anecdotal data that we've been receiving from community partners, from people, from students, from family members, people that represent different communities that say they're so happy to see that the college is reaching out to them and their communities and their backyard, in their language, speaking to them about their major concerns. And then in addition to that, I don't want to just provide numbers on advertising, but the direct impact that we've also seen already on campus. So for example, abc.edu, this year, we saw three hundred thousand more unique visitors to our website than we did last year. So that's direct impact. Three hundred thousand more people visit us online this year compared to last year. And in addition to that, seven thousand more people this year clicked on the Apply Now button. And so you can see the chart on the right. It's no surprise that this year we've had eleven hundred more college applications completed in fall twenty-three versus fall twenty-two, which as we know, as soon as they apply, now they're in our system, we can communicate with them and we could start working toward converting them into FTS. Thank you. and we could start working toward converting them into FTS. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Trustees, Dr. Zellet and colleagues. As you all know, I have been here only a few short months, six to be exact. And in that time, HR has been busy supporting our employees and furthering district initiatives. And I am excited to provide you with a brief glimpse into our successes and milestones since June twenty-twenty-three. As you know from our lengthy personnel schedules on the board agenda, HR has been actively recruiting, interviewing, and hiring employees. Over the past six months, we have conducted fifty-six recruitments and successfully hired forty-two new employees. I'm sorry, full-time employees. We welcomed our employees to campus with the first new employee orientation in August, where representatives from ITS, purchasing, HR, the foundation, and other departments gave our newest Marauder employees vital information about AVC resources and processes. We also hosted an in-person benefits fair for the first time since before the pandemic in the cafeteria. We had over a hundred employees participate and speak to representatives from seventeen vendors. The feedback we received from both events was very positive, and both events will be returning to AVC in the near future. HR continues to support the development and growth of our personnel by engaging in trainings and professional development opportunities. Some of the many trainings we have, uh, featured include EO trainings for hiring committees, communications trainings, hazmat disposal trainings, and Title IX trainings, to name a few. We are also midway through our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Leadership Academy cohort and are eager to see the great work that will come out of this amazing group of professionals. We also partnered with Dean Riley Dwyer and Student Equity to bring ally training programs to the campus, uh, known as Safe Zones and VetNet. We are, and those, we anticipate those starting in the spring semester. The HR department has been working hard on standardizing new processes. We unveiled a new lactation accommodation policy in collaboration with an employee and are working on digitizing our TB test compliance and evaluation processes. Finally, HR has been positively contributing to the campus culture and boosting morale. We have received countless comments on our increased responsiveness and quicker recruitment turnaround time. We are working on continuing to streamline our processes and improve efficiency as we continue to serve our employees and be kind. Thank you and happy holidays to you all.
Good morning, Board of Trustees, President Zellet. I'm Shami Barar, Vice President of Administrative Services. And I'm going to start with an update on Measure AV. I'm pleased to report that construction for Cedar Hall, the new, uh, three-story instructional use building is on track and, um, scheduled for completion in March of twenty-twenty-five. Show next to Cedar Hall is the Commons, which will be the new Student Life Building sitting in the center of campus. That's currently in DSA, and the anticipated project completion for that is March of twenty-twenty-six. Moving on, as you know, Storm, uh, Tropical Storm Hillary caused damage to the administration building and the hub. And shown here is the work that's currently underway in those spaces. Um, it is on track to be completed prior to the beginning of the year. In the first few weeks of January, we'll start moving, um, staff into those buildings. So we're, we're very pleased with the progress that's taking place there. In twenty-twenty-three, even though it was a challenging time, it was a productive year for our teams. Shown here are some of the initiatives that ITS, um, and IMC, uh, worked on. Some of the achievements include completing identity management automation, transcript scanning into on-base, replacing all computers at the Palmdale Center with new equipment. Uh, we separated out employee, student, and retiree accounts and domains, helping make our systems more secure. ITS migrated sixteen hundred and eighty-six employee accounts from Gmail to Microsoft and trained our staff, allowing them to, to, to use Outlook in a very short period. And before the end of the year, they'll migrate all students as well. That student migration is expected on December twelfth. So I'm very proud of our team, the dedication. And this slide really shows all the work that's gone on throughout the year. Finally, the cafeteria. And with the board's support and the president's support, we brought back the cafeteria to ABC. It is ABC-run, and, uh, the efforts of James Nassapack, our cafeteria staff, Cassandra and Marisol, and our student workers. Um, I'm proud to report that in only four months, we served twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-one people. In total sales, a hundred and eight thousand, the average ticket, four dollars and one cent. Monthly average, six thousand seven hundred and forty-five. The food is delicious, the staff is great, and our students are being so. Thank you.
And I want to thank the executive team. And while we tried to keep the presentation very brief, I want to acknowledge Wendy Dumas, our internal auditor, Dr. Mita Goell, who is leading our, uh, institutional effectiveness and research area as well as library. And you will hear from Diane Knippel in the closing comments about the foundation. Very proud of this team, uh, working through some very changeable and sometimes adverse circumstances. We're working very diligently along with everyone on campus to ensure that the board's, uh, strategic priorities are being accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zellet, and also to the team. Outstanding presentation. Okay. Um, before we move on to eleven point one, election of officers for the period of December eighth, twenty-twenty-three through December thirteenth of twenty-twenty-four, I just want to say, um, to my colleagues on the board, I just want to thank you for providing me the opportunity this past year to serve as your president. It has truly been an honor. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, election of officers. Do I have a nomination for the position? Okay, um, do I have a nomination, excuse me, board? Do I have a nomination for the position of president for the twenty-four year?
Move that Michelle Harvey be appointed president.
Second.
Any discussion? Public comment, uh, Mr. Eugene Hernandez?
Good morning. Um, uh, I'm Eugene Hernandez, Anobelli Green Party. Uh, I recommend that Michael Reeves be selected as president of, of the board. I have seen the compassion that Michael Reeves has shown, his community commitment. He goes to community of, of fairs throughout the Antelope Valley. And based upon your, uh, report, you know, it saddens me to see that so many of our students lack basic needs, you know? Many I know are homeless. Uh, the fact that they need food is really reflective that the Bidenomics has hit our community hard, you know? That, uh, the cost of living has gone up, uh, basic, um, necessities such as rent are out of reach of many of our students because, uh, there's no rent control here. People are getting evicted. People are getting, uh, homeless, and we need someone with a compassion. And Mike Reeves' experience, both here and on the college board, shows that he has a wide range of compassion. And that's what, what's needed in this board, not just administrative expertise, but hands-on work. And he's done that hands-on work, and I've seen him, um, in action. And I think that someone with his compassion and his expertise should be on, as the executive on, on the board. I think that, um, without his compassion, without his commitment, the, the college is going to lack something because right now your enrollment is declining. Uh, it's not at the level where I was attending when it was full. And, uh, it saddens me that so many institutions of higher learning have so much difficulty providing, um, basic necessity for students who come from low-income families. And I know many of the students here are, are low-income. So I would urge you to vote for him as president. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, to nominate Ms. Michelle Harvey as our new president. Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Harvey, you will be our new president. All right, uh, vice president position. Do I have a motion for a new vice president?
Nominate Michael Adams.
Uh, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Any advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that leaves us with our clerk. Do I have a motion for, for the position of clerk? I'd like to, uh, nominate Mr. Steve Buffalo for the position of clerk. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with those three new officers, we will now change seats on the dais. All right, so we are continuing with eleven point two, selection of one board member to represent the district in the election of members to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization and Selection of One Board Member to Represent the District at the Los Angeles County School Trustees Association. There's one member, uh, for both responsibilities. Do we have a nomination? This, Mr. Reeves is currently, you're in this role, Mr. Reeves?
I, I decline.
Um, whomever, uh, board takes this position has to be willing. The meetings are mostly always, um, in, in LA County. So, uh, if, if no one else is interested in lieu of us not having a representative at Laxta, I will, I will take on this role as well. I've done it for a few years.
Move the Barbara Gaines.
Second.
Um, discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Barbara Gaines has been selected for this role. Eleven point three, selection of one board member to represent the district in the Antelope Valley Schools Board Association for twenty-twenty-four. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Barbara Gaines.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Barbara Gaines has been selected, represent the School Boards Association for twenty-twenty-four. Eleven point four, selection of one board member to represent the district on the Antelope Valley Count, uh, College Foundation Board of Directors for twenty-twenty-four.
I nominate Michael Adams.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, so Michael Adams has been selected for that. Eleven point four, eleven point five, approval of the superintendent's organizational rep.
Move approval?
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So move. Eleven point six, approval of the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule. Is there a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, and approval of the twenty-twenty-four Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule, that is eleven point six. May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. So that has been approved, eleven point six. All right, the report of closed session, there is nothing to report out, uh, from closed session. And now we are, uh, looking to get approval for the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, I would like thirteen point eight, like the vice president in charge of operations.
Sir, would you please articulate your question before we bring people to the podium?
I'm requesting vice president, creation come up.
Yeah, but the discussion question is what President Zellet is asking. What is your question?
President, uh, Zellet, not a board member. He has, I don't know why she's asking the question. The board member is asking to have Vice President College and Finance come up and answer the question. Well. Asking, nodding, president.
And with all due, with all due respect, sir, um, I am the board's only employee. And, and the past has been that you asked the question, and then, then we, we designate who will be giving the answer.
Okay, well, the question.
That's the definition of discussion.
Questions that have not been answered that I would like answered. First of all, um, we appropriated two hundred thousand dollars, uh, two months ago for student housing.
Mr. Reeves, can you speak, bring your microphone down just a little bit because your voice wanes. Just bring your microphone down.
Okay.
There you go.
Better now. Okay, we appropriated few hundred thousand dollars for student housing. And at the time, uh, I was under the impression it was going to be used for motels and hotels. And I was informed, no, it's, it's for, uh, permanent type housing for students. Now, I've, uh, asked the president repeatedly in emails, um, how is that money being dispersed? And to whom? Not what students are getting the money, but to whom the money is being dispersed and how much. And she says, well, we cannot, uh, divulge that information because it has to do with students. Well, I'm not asking about students. I just want to see how that money is being dispersed. And I thought if that's under the vice president for administration, who is the supervisor for the finance department, maybe he would know how that is being dispersed. I don't think that's an unfair question, uh, to ask about how public money is being spent.
No, it's not unfair, sir, and I, I am afraid that you're conflating a couple of different items. Measure AV budget and expenditure has to do with our construction. Our student housing comes under basic needs, and it's a separate issue. The two hundred thousand that you have requested information for, I've given you that information. you have requested information for, I've given you that information, and that $200,000 was part of a grant, a planning grant, given to us by the state, particularly for planning our student housing project. And that has been publicly illustrated, it's been presented to the board, the board approved the contracts that went out with that, for that $200,000. It is not the same issue that you're talking about with regard to student housing and other contracts that will be showing up later on, on the board agenda. So I have addressed your question about the $200,000 with regard to the planning grant. If there has been confusion, I apologize, but there are conflated issues here.
I beg your pardon, Dr. Zelik. When we voted on that, I mentioned that I thought it was for the motels and the hotels, and at that time, you said, no, it's not, it's for semi-permanent housing, and I would look into it and get back to you. This is not AV funds, this was a grant that the money that we, it was $200,000 that we voted on to pay rent for students. That, that was what my impression was at the time, and you said you would tell me, you know, how that's being dispersed. You haven't. Now, since you brought up the AV matter, you brought it up. One of the questions I have for the Vice President is, do we still have that 10% contingency fund to take care of buildings that we had under the previous president? That was the second question, and thank you for reminding me. So, two questions. $200,000 that we allocated, said was going to be maybe for apartments or something? How's that being dispersed? And also, second question is, the AV fund, do we still have the 10% emergency on the AV fund?
The set aside is still untouched, and it is in the same place it's always been, that money is still existent, and, and I, I would like to have a conversation with you so that we could go through board agenda items, because I still believe that there's some confusion about.
So, we've gone through this on emails for a couple of months now, and you keep telling me you're going to give me the information, and the latest email is that you can't divulge the information because it has to do with students, which is ridiculous. I'm not asking about which student or whatever they're renting, I just want to know how that money's being spent and paid to whom.
A point of order. I was just about to get to that, Mr. Buffalo and Mr. Reeves. The conversation that you want to have with Dr. Zelik, I'm going to suggest that you two make time to sit down and discuss that, but it's not within, your second question falls within this discussion, but to first, so with the consent agenda, now that we've addressed that, may I have a motion? Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. All right, we're moving on to 14 action items. 14.1 is approval of Resolution 2324/5, Board of Trustees Regarding Compensation for Absence, Member of the Board of Trustees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Advice?
I approve.
All right, so we have 14.1 approved.
Madam President, I just wanted to make sure that we note on the record that you abstained from.
Oh, yes, definitely. I'm sorry if I did not say that. 14.2, approval of agreement between Adams, Jerk, Hammond, Stan, sorry about the pronunciation, ADK, and Antelope Valley Community College District for Professional Legal Services relating to a Title IX complaint. So move. Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Now, I've requested information on how much we've spent on legal fees this fiscal year, and I have, I cannot get that information from the administration. That's all I want to know. This 14.2 may be merited to hire this law firm for this particular issue, but I was interested in how much money we're spending for lawyers. We have our own lawyer, how much money we're spending for additional lawyers, and I cannot get that information. Is it possible that I can get that information? Thank you.
Dr. Zelik?
If the board wishes that information, the board as a whole can be given that information.
Thank you for that, Mr. Reeves. We'll make sure that you get the information.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have a public comment. Dr. Jason Bowen?
Good morning. There are other alternatives to spending $44,000, $45,000 on additional attorney fees. Thank you.
All right, Pamela Ford?
I'm the first to say I was angered over what I felt were excessive Title IX investigations that keep cropping up. I thought it was going to be similar to the other investigations that have taken place in the past. I have sat in the presence of classified who are a part of investigations and saw the fear and anxiety they went through over just the email regarding an investigation. I attended the Title IX training for categorical departments, and it was very informative. At times, too real, but the videos drove the point home, along with the discussion and explanations from Dr. Helsper, Vice President of Human Resources. Then, attending the training on Wednesday, it occurred to me that these investigations allow both sides to tell their unvarnished truth, allowing evidence to reveal the facts. The training addressed matters I honestly thought were issues that couldn't be addressed officially, such as bullying and inappropriate speech and manner, and so forth, which were once buried, and that's no longer the case. Many being aware of violations before would turn their heads or keep silent. With Title IX, there is no longer such a thing as, I just want, I just want to do my job and stay out of trouble. We can no longer turn our heads in the workplace to inappropriate behaviors and speech by any party. We are all responsible for this, and I am in agreement with the funds being expended to address issues as they arise for the protection of everyone. This will eliminate those on this campus who believe there is nothing anyone can do to them because of their position or status. The presentation was well-done, and I appreciate the detail and the fact that Dr. Helsper used actual video footage to drive the points home. The training is in-person and allows for direct and immediate interaction. Everyone should be required to participate in this training. For years, I have seen employees, and sometimes even managers, being yelled at, belittled, berated, and there is no recourse. Or when someone erupts into violent or explosive shouting during a meeting, perhaps there is now a conduit to address such behavior. At times, people get out of hand with their inappropriate behaviors and become volatile in their behavior or speech. No one calls them on it due to people feeling intimidated, which allows the behavior to grow. But Title IX gives an opportunity to have these behaviors squelched. We don't need people on this campus who cannot control their tempers or behaviors. We all should be able to work in a safe environment, free from any type of harassment. With the knowledge I gained, I can better understand, I can better support classified who become subject to such investigations or have a fought, or have to file a claim themselves. And I'm going to tell you, for, since 2005 to 2023, I sat in a corner office by myself, away from my department, and I was ostracized by a lot of people on this campus because of harassment that came to me from my supervisor, but I had nowhere to go. And so, I do feel that there needs to be something done. There were egregious things that were done that I'll talk, that I'll take to my grave. So the idea that something is finally being done, I am appreciative. Dr. Helsper did an excellent job on conducting this training. Thank you.
Madam President, before you move on, I, I think it's important, and thank you Pamela, because she touched on some of the things that I would have added with regard to Title IX, and making sure that not only the board and the public understand the nature of Title IX complaints and the complexity of resolving those complaints. June 12th of this year, the board passed an administrative procedure regarding responding to Title IX complaints that are required by federal law. We were behind times in terms of approving it because we anticipated that there would be changes to the regulations. There are still potential changes to the regulations that may be coming forward under the current administration. What everyone needs to understand with regard to Title IX and legal fees and services is that there are very detailed and very specific steps that have to be taken when managing a Title IX complaint. While we have an in-house attorney and investigator, that individual cannot wear all the hats that are required under Title IX. You have to have advisors, you have to have decision-makers, you have to have investigators, you have to have a hearing officer, you may need mediators. Your in-house legal counsel cannot do all of those without having a conflict of interest against the institution. That is the role of your in-house counsel, is to protect the institution as a whole, is to the extent that we may have complaints where the institution, institution may have liability, the in-house counsel cannot serve and wear all of those hats and be fair and impartial to the claimant and/or respondent in a Title IX matter. So it's important that the public and anyone who comes up to speak and the board be aware that it, there is a need to have professional services. Typically, those who are able to provide the professional services under Title IX are attorneys, and that is why we engage the services of outside attorneys. We may not be using a specific attorney, that person may be an investigator, they may be an advisor, but they are working through a firm where they are fair, impartial, and neutral.
Thank you, Ms. Good for that. We've already done discussion advisement?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.3, approval of Citizens Fund Oversight Committee for Measure AV Membership Appointment.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.4, approval of memorandum of understanding between California State University Bakersfield and Antelope Valley College regarding the expansion of STEM programs. It's CSUB-AB. Motion, please?
So move.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to acknowledge some guests in our audience. We have the Dean of CSU Bakersfield Antelope Valley, Elizabeth Adams, and also the Chief of Staff, Kristin Watson, from CSU Bakersfield here in attendance to celebrate this milestone agreement to expand STEM offerings here, degree completion at the baccalaureate level for our students. Want to thank our partners, and we really look forward to deepening this partnership and making more opportunities available for our students. If, if there's anything, no, you, okay. Thank you for being here, and thank you so, and please give our gratitude to President Zalesny and our congratulations on her own graduation into retirement. Thank you so much.
All right. 14.5, approval of grant subaward agreement between Santa Clarita Community College District and Antelope Valley College from October 1, 2023 through September 30 of 2028, engaging community college students in native bee biodiversity research. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
I would like to bring to the board's remembrance that Dr. Patricia Palavasino brought some students and talked to you about the bee project that they've been doing research with. That is, that is a part of this granting opportunity.
Yes, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 14.6, approval of academic policies and procedures, APMP Committee's Recommendation of Course Listings for Fall 2024. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.7, approval of contract renewal with Lamar and Antelope Valley College for billboard advertising in support of the 2425 enrollment campaign. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I want to bunch these together. 14.7, 14.8, 14.9. I wonder, President, Dr. Zelik, can we have the marketing manager come up? I have a few questions about this.
So it, it's entirely possible that some of your questions may have been addressed in the presentation.
The question, and I repeatedly bring this up every time we discuss these contracts with the sign people and AVTA and so forth. Do we have specific data that shows that these methods of advertising, which we've spent a lot of money for, are actually bringing students in? In the presentation, it was bragged about that we get so many hits on the computer for ABC. Well, that's true. I'm on the computer on Facebook, and it pops up. I didn't, I didn't push to look for ABC. So that's not a good one. There were other instances, well, we have people ask contact. Well, I'm filling out things all the time on the computer, that doesn't mean that I'm going to buy the product, but I want to know, and I keep asking this, when these people come into the college, how did you find out about ABC? Was it the bus, or the signs, or something? And you keep promising that you'll tell me what specific, you know, is it really paying off for us, and hundreds of thousands of dollars on these advertisements? And again, I say the signs are not readable. When you're coming up the freeway or going through town, the print on them, it's spread out. It's a nice, if you stop and stare at it, it's nice, but you, really, if you're passing by, you can't read it. So that needs to be corrected. And final thing, AVTA told me that we could put our broch, our brochures for the college in all their buses, and the head of AVTA told me, we can put our brochures in all the buses, it won't cost us a cent. They have little pockets in all the buses that we could put our brochures in. I don't know if that's been done. It should be done because it's free. Thank you.
Trustee Reeves, I just want to say that I saw seven percenting. I know that they talked about the hits from social media and those things, but then, we actually saw real numbers that talked about the year-over-year growth of them. Do you want me to recite those to you there in the presentation? Let me know if you want me to do it, or do you want someone to tell you?
No, that's not.
Are you sure?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So with. Yes, he has asked that, trustee Reeves has asked that we group 14.7, 14.8, 14.9 together, and if that's okay with the rest of the board, then that's exactly what we'll do. May I have a motion on these items? Discussion? Advisement?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
All right, we have one in opposition, Mr. Reeves. Thank you. 14.10, approval of agreement for preferred hotel services with Oxford Suites Lancaster. And I'm going to start because we have a public comment from Pamela Ford. Ms. Ford, are you... Discussion? Discussion?
Madam President, what I am...
These are the ones we've clustered. 14, I'm sorry, 14.10, approval of agreement for preferred hotel services with Oxford Suites Lancaster. That is 14 point...
Okay. Yes, I, I have a comment, President.
Okay, discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Now, you look at the supplemental material on this. This is for faculty, student, whatever. And my question to the President, President Dr. Zalat, was did we solicit bids around the community to see if any other hotels and motels, et cetera, you know, because the Oxford Suites used to have Marie Callenders next to it and Marie Callenders gone. So it's not exactly the most desirable place like it used to be, in my opinion. It was great when they had Marie Callenders and they had IHOP across the street and Denny's down the street. Now that Marie's calendar is gone, I'm just wondering if any of those other motels like the Marriott Holiday Inn around there have been asked if they would be interested in housing the faculty, guests, or students.
Thank you for the question, sir. We did indeed open up an RFP and they were the only, only institution that responded.
Ms. Ford has returned to...
I have some questions. I missed a lot of the discussion. I have some questions about the location based on personal observation. But first I wanted to ask, what, what is the purpose of the contract? Is this for students or is it for out-of-town guests coming in? Okay, if this is for students, has anyone been there to actually look at the condition of the hotel and assess the cleanliness and safety? Because I did. And if we're doing this out of concern for our students, I think we, we need to take some responsibility in terms of maybe making sure that the environment is safe. And because I found it very uncomfortable and very disconcerting over there. And I just wonder in the contract, are there any assurances regarding upkeep and safety? Because I think that's important if we want our students to be there. I wouldn't want the students to be anywhere, to stay anywhere that I wouldn't stay. And I was scheduled to stay there because there was some repairs on my street. When I got there, I had them cancel my reservation and give my money back because it was that unsafe. You have people hanging off the banisters. It's kind of an unseemly environment. And so I would ask that we take a greater responsibility in the places that we send our students. It's about the students why I'm concerned. And I hope that before you agree to this contract, you at least add that you have an opportunity to go over and review, look at it, and ensure that the students are going to be safe. And also if they feel unsafe, that there's a mechanism in place that they can report that to the district. But it's really not a good environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. You're appreciated. Alrighty, so I do believe that we are to the vote on 14.10. Advice?
I do not approve. I agree with Ms. Ford and I think that perhaps there should be a little more consideration put into this before we approve.
I must say that I'm not voting for this. And neither am I. Well, that, that, yeah, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
This as a whole. Thank you for your comment. 1411, approval of memorandum of understanding between Michaela's House of Hope, Inc. and Antelope Valley College for housing resources to students. May I have a motion?
No move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? 1411 is approved. 1412, approval of contract between AdNAP and Antelope Valley College for scribing services. May I have a motion? Second. Discussion? Advice? Sorry, discussion, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, Madam President. I, I'm sorry, is this the organization that we renewed the contract for one year instead of three years?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So this is another facet of the services that they provide?
Yeah, scribing service.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.3, appro, 13, I'm sorry, 14.13, approval of fill contract for services agreements between Aerodolics, Inc. and Antelope Valley Community College District to provide auto lab modernization. Have a motion?
No move.
Second. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Has approved. 14.4, approval of amendment number one to services agreements between Gerling and Associates, Inc. and Antelope Valley College for mobile welding classroom rebid, ABC 2022, 2314A. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
14.14 is approved. 14.15, approval of settlement agreement with Kenan and Associates for damages caused by defective variable airflow valve, BAV, and Student Services Project Number 17-037. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Has been approved. 14.16, approval of settlement agreement with Kenan and Associates for damages caused in sewer lines at Discovery Lab Project Number 17-039 by subcontractor. May I have a motion? Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? 14.17, approval of fill contract for services with ATI Restoration LLC for ABC Restoration Catastrophic Event Funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This restoration, is this for the administration building?
Yes.
And President, we're, we're scheduled to move back in here next month, right?
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That has been approved. 14.18, approval of change order for boiler replacement project Number 22-006 with scheduled maintenance funds. May I have a motion?
No move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
Sorry, I'm just, yes, we did advise. So... Did we have advice? No, okay. Okay, all those in favor? Sorry about that. Right, now 14.19, 14.20, and 14.21 with your approval will be grouped together. Approval of settlement agreement with Mirage Builders, approval of project assignment amendments, and approval of final notice of completion and resolution of acceptance. May I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, President. On 14.19, Mirage stopped doing the job and now they want to be paid for what they did, they didn't complete the job. Is that correct?
No, sir, trustee Reeves. Mirage did complete the work. The work was delayed due to another contractor that, that caused a delay. And so this change order, or this settlement agreement is with Mirage for the additional expenses that they incurred that we're working with Assuredy to recover on the back.
Paying for the subcontract?
We are, so our contract with Mirage, they were impacted due to another contract that was delayed. And so we felt that this was justified. The settlement agreement was a good settlement agreement, but those additional costs, we are looking to recover and working with Assuredy to recover these.
Thank you very much.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're to our informational items. 15.1, two, and three, and you can review those, reports and announcements. 16.1, academic...
Good morning, trustees, President Zalat, Ms. Cook, Ms. McCorr. As you know, our semester's over and faculty are looking forward to well-deserved time off. And I always find, and I, I really appreciated the sort of end of the year report from our executive administrative team, pardon me. It's a time to reflect on what's been happening and how, how we're doing. And I've been doing that as well. I really am grateful for Antelope Valley College and the opportunity to be here. I feel like we have great people to work with. We have great students and we have a great team as a whole. And I personally have had experience, I'm sure many of you also have had experience, where you don't always have the environment that you want and that is as productive as it can be. And I feel like we do have a very productive environment. And because of the awareness of that, I feel it's very precious and it's also fragile. I really want us as a whole to continue to acknowledge that none of us are perfect. We all make mistakes. I can own my own mistakes and I encourage everyone to own our mistakes and also to acknowledge when other folks have done well. And I think we do that. And as long as we continue to do that, I think we can keep the, the wonderful preciousness that we have. I don't know what's happening, but whatever it is, I, I think I'm still communicating. Anyway, I, I really just want us to encourage, encourage us to continue to own when we do well and when we don't, to give each other grace when we do not. And if we can continue to do that, you know, this, this can continue to be a great place to be and we can continue to serve our students and our community and to get better. And I wish you all a wonderful holiday and I look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good morning, everyone. I want to say thank you to ladies and gentlemen of the board for your hard work this entire year. Thank you, Patty McCorr, for being so amazing all the time. Thank you, Ms. Cook, for your work. Thank you, President Zalat, for working with faculty and classified union to achieve incredible things in our contract. That is not lost on me. And you played a pivotal role in, in, in the victories that the college has had. And I think that those are victories the entire college can celebrate. Looking back, I have seen, I mean, I was told this is something that's not seen normally, but there was incredible unity between classified union and the faculty. I'd like to thank Pamela Ford for, for making that happen. This semester, I personally have never worked so hard in my life. I feel that's not true. Out of graduate school was pretty, pretty awful. But, but, so I'm not saying it was, it was that difficult. But in terms of my career here at Antelope Valley College, I've never had the difficulties that I, I've had to face. Sleepless nights, hard work, but, but productive work. And, and it was a great workout. Not that I want spring to be the same. Faculty that I've talked to, they have worked exceptionally hard. I've spoken to several faculty walking into buildings, you know, crossing the parking lot where they have commented this, there's something about this fall that was just hard. Now, I'm going to end with the students' experience, the same thing. I've never seen the students in my classrooms work so hard. In my night class, I'm leaving at 10:15, 10:30 at night because these students are sticking around asking questions. I've got students in my office. There's no chairs. There's a student sitting on the floor and they're just listening and we're solving problems. And then I say, let's go across to the lab because it's empty. And then the office hours is like another lecture. And, 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 and it's just students. And then after that, there's class and then they're in class listening to another lecture. So I've never seen the students work so hard. I think they're hungry to achieve and it is a pleasure and an honor to be a part of this process. And so I'm looking forward to another productive spring. And I'd like to say happy holidays to everyone. I hope you have a wonderful holiday break. Thank you.
Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pamela Ford.
It's just, don't ring the bell on me, please. I have some things to say. First of all, congratulations, Ms. Harvey, on your presidency. I'm glad I get to share this role while you're on. This year has gone by so fast and so much has happened. I want to thank all the classified for their hard work and the service that they provided to the students this entire year. I had the privilege of donating and participating in the gift extravaganza. It was heartening to see the students attend and select gifts and toys for their children and families without having to consider cost. The spring enrollment event and student services was accomplished without any issues. All students and student service, all, that all classified staff and student services participated and were on site until 8:00 PM. It was exciting to have Angela Davis and Dolores Huerta on campus to speak. They were both excellent speakers. I'd also like to see, just as a suggestion, Jane Elliott speak at our campus. Yesterday during the town hall meeting, Dr. Zalat discussed asking staff who are bilingual to speak to assist our students. I think this is very important in addressing our students' needs and it goes towards their success, which is why classified, the classified union proposed a stipend for this for those who serve in the role of bilingual interpreters. This was not our, this was not agreed to this year. However, I hold hope that we can bring this back to the table next, when we negotiate again, because the need is here. We're in the process of working on a remote work pilot MOU. Hopefully that will become completed soon. I would also like to... completed soon. I would also like to see classified leadership included in the discussion regarding Edge and Nav. So far, that hasn't happened, and classified are impacted by Edge and Nav. I express my thanks to the faculty union and senate leaderships for working so closely with classified leadership. Never have these groups worked so closely together and accomplished so much. Well, I have to include Aurora in that. And getting to the finish line would not have been possible without Dr. Zalit's management team working with us. We have accomplished a lot over this past year. What heartens me most is despite any actual or perceived differences, we can roll up our sleeves and move forward for the greater good of our students and campus community. We can all subscribe to being open-minded, using those differences to work towards a place of strength and unity instead of being small-minded and nurturing grudges. There is no work in being indifferent. The work occurs when we enlarge our thinking processes to move forward, building each other's interests. Bridget, I told you.
Ford, I just, I.
Ford, would you please indulge me? Thank you. We are all well aware, all sides of the house have their arsenal of filing U L Ps, lawsuits, and punitive disciplinary actions. But what if we take a beat, have more conversation to understand the issues, and try and resolve matters quickly and in-house? That will require compromise on both sides. Realistically, disagreements occur because we're all human, and sometimes harsh things are said when passions are running high. And we can convince ourselves we will never get past the hurt. I do that all the time. But with time and cooler heads prevailing and willingness, we can move forward. Sometimes the worst agreements can lead to the most creative resolutions if all have a positive mindset to move forward. My dad used to say to my siblings and I, when we would get into disagreements or fistfights, that teeth and tongue fall out, but they go back together, meaning pain is present when we bite our tongue, but it doesn't stop us from eating. So we all have to find a way to move past the pain and disagreements and work together. Let's all uniformly commit to keeping the momentum going, and I wish you all the best in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Sashley Hawkins. Okay. Associated Student Organization, Steve Benitez.
Uh, good morning, Board of Trustees. Uh, Steve Benitez, Associated Student Organization. I just wanted to form what A S O is doing this month. Uh, we did not attend the advocacy assembly because at the time of the approval of travel registration filled up for, uh, tickets. But, uh, uh, we decided to meet instead to discuss, um, workshops for, uh, Marauders' Matter Leadership Institute and work on, um, planning out, uh, the spring semester. So, um, at the moment, um, I'm just, uh, really in high hopes. Finals are over and, um, staying positive, looking forward, and living the dream. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for that. Antelope Valley College Foundation, Ms. Diane.
Zalit, um, it's a season of giving. And what I want to do is thank our community, thank you, thank our employees, and thank our students, because we're able to help our students. So the good news I have today is, um, our Giving Tuesday campaign, which we ran the entire month of November, second best year ever. Um, best year was, uh, uh, actual contributions before the match was thirteen thousand. This year was ten thousand. But with our match, we have twenty thousand dollars to give to basic needs and to our pantry. This is the first year that we put basic needs as an option, and eighty percent of the donations went to basic needs. So we're seeing the community and our own employees wanting to help students more holistically than just for food. So to me, that's very, very pleasant. Secondly, we had our grants program this year, as we do every year for faculty. We had eight, most we've ever had, um, eight requests for funding. So the good news is the foundation funded three of those requests for a total of about twenty thousand dollars. We also, and I want to thank my employee, Lisa O'Leary, who for the other five, found internal district funding that should have been funded before. So we were able to fund all of them in some manner or fashion. So that's just wonderful. So happy with that. Our scholarship program, uh, we are up and running for scholarships. Students are making applications. It closes the first week of February. So please get the word out, faculty, whoever's listening, make applications. We've got money to give. That's why this is a great season of giving. And Michael, thank you for joining us back again on the foundation. You're a great asset to the foundation board, and you're a contributor yourself and supporter so much of this college. So thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Office of the Superintendent, President, Dr. Zalit.
Good morning, trustees and student trustee. We've arrived at our final meeting for twenty twenty-three, and we are halfway through the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. As you reflect on the semester in review that was presented by the executive team, you can see that despite many hurdles, the administrators, classified professional, professionals and faculty of Antelope Valley College have persevered and accomplished significant progress toward the strategic goals that you as a board have established. I want to take this time to thank each of you for the time and dedication you exhibit, the investment you continually make in this college and community, and in each employee on this campus. This year, the board has promoted campus progress by settling two contracts with generous raises in compensation and benefits for the workers, thereby investing in the future of this institution and inviting employees to be future thinking as well. You approved and settled the Furb with A B C F C E, putting to rest contentious issues that plagued campus progress. And you've approved and supported hires that complete the executive team and fill in the ranks of workers all across campus. In addition to the investment in our human capital, this board has overseen the continued growth and development of campus facilities and academic programming, including the addition of a second baccalaureate degree in respiratory care and today's M O U with C S U Bakersfield to expand STEM programming and degree completion on the Lancaster campus. Your supportive action under the leadership of outgoing board president Gaines has truly positioned this college to move forward positively. I would like to congratulate incoming board president trustee Michelle Harvey, vice president trustee Michael Adams, and board secretary Steve Buffalo on their newly adopted roles, and I look forward to this next year of positive leadership and continued growth. As we depart campus for a much-needed and well-deserved break, I want to thank everyone for working together to serve students. And I want to call out the executive team that I serve. This group of leaders has grown together over the last semester, learned new levels of collaboration, and they come to work every day investing in this community despite the countless challenges they face internally and externally. We can only get better, and for the sake of this campus, we will do so. So many times, it, the executive team works quietly, and most of the time, we should. But I want this team to know, particularly since the majority of them are new, that, um, the work is important and it's coming together. Classified professionals and faculty, we can't do anything without you, and we are fully aware of that, and we are grateful for the collaboration that we have and, and the service that we can render together. Everyone enjoy a happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Have a restful, safe, and healing time all. As we set our intentions for the new year and make resolutions, I encourage all to set an eye toward peace, collaboration, growth, continued service. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zalit. Our board member comment?
Good morning, everyone. Uh, I'd like to extend a congratulations to everyone for getting through this semester. I'm going to echo the words of Doctor Bowen. This was a very difficult semester, but we all got through it in one piece. In one month, it'll be about four years since we entered the COVID nineteen pandemic, and our world, world has never been the same. But since then, we have made amazing progress in terms of our admissions and our registration. And for that, I am so proud of our campus and all of the people working. Um, just a few more things. Congratulations to all the new board officers. I'm, I'm very confident you guys are going to be great leadership. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And congratulations to the basketball team for placing third at our tournament that we hosted this past week. And happy holidays to everyone. I hope you guys rest, rest well over this break.
Thank you. Trustee Gaines?
Uh, when, when he said good morning, I was, it is good morning, yes. Sort of forgot that we are here in the morning. Um, I want to commend the leadership team. Um, that was a wonderful presentation. And it's so many, so many, uh, aspects of the presentation. First of all, I'm, I'm thrilled every time I hear our enrollment is, you know, gradually going back up to where we once were. And, uh, and I think the day will come that perhaps we will even surpass, um, the historical enrollment at Antelope Valley Community College. And, uh, I, um, I also want to have to think back on two thousand sixteen, when our community, we reached out to the community, um, of the Antelope Valley, the entire community, and asked them to support a bond. And it was a, it was, uh, an unheard of amount at the time, three hundred fifty million. And not only did this community support that bond, but they supported it overwhelmingly. And every time we see one of the, um, buildings that we promised the community, uh, actually completed, and we do a ribbon cutting or a welcome to that new building, um, it just, um, reminds me that we, we are truly living up to the promise that, that we gave the community, in which the community, uh, said, we trust you, that you will fulfill, um, the expectation of this bond. And so it's, it's great to see. I just want to thank you, Mr. Brar also, and your, everybody that works under you for making sure in all of our construction contracts, um, the management teams who are really, really seeing this, this bond, uh, root to fruition. The buildings are, every time I drive by, I, it just gets a little excited to see, certainly not the Antelope Valley Community College that I attended, but, uh, it's beautiful to see. So, um, that's, um, that's one thing that we always want to, um, be reminded that it is the community that supports us in this. I also want to just say, um, I want to wish everyone, faculty, the staff, leadership, um, everyone a wonderful holiday. Uh, so I'm sure well-deserved. You're like me, you're kind of counting down the days before you get a little break here. So I look forward to, uh, Ms. Harvey, I know she's going to do a wonderful job in twenty twenty-four, and, uh, kind of nice sitting down here.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Barbara Gaines for her fine job of being president of the board. She had to deal with me, so congratulations, Barbara, and good luck, Michelle, feeling free. Um, I want to echo what, uh, Ms. Ford said. Uh, we need to get along. We really face financial problems in the future in the state of California. And the unions and faculty and the classified are really going to have to work together in coming years, that it's going to be tough. And I want you all to be aware of it. We need to remember that we're here as one for the students and college. Finally, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. God bless you all. Hey, thank you very much, Barbara. That's a fun job, isn't it?
People don't realize how exactly, uh, much more it takes being the president of the board than just a regular board member. And congratulations, Michelle. I, I know this will be a fun trip, and Michelle has incredible knowledge of education, education issues. So she'll do a very, very good job. Uh, I wanted to, uh, note that the, um, Antelope Valley College's Athletic Hall of Fame Dinner and Awards, uh, program will be held in late January at the Hellenic Center. It'll be honoring both staff and athletes, uh, former athletes who've been here. I wanted to mention, since people were bringing up marketing, and since I did a lot of that back in the day, it's a very complicated subject, and sometimes you can see direct results, sometimes you can't. But sometimes the idea is just to keep the college visible out there to people, so people talk about it. And, uh, I also, as far as, uh, promoting programs and enrollment, and one of the things that I, I think people don't fully understand, some do, some don't, is everybody at this college has a responsibility to help promote the college, the programs, the enrollment. And that takes a lot of effort. Nobody gets a day off on that. And it's very important for our student enrollment in the future. And I would like to point out that I often wear college gear out in the community, and I get a lot of questions about the college. Now, if I'm wearing Dodger gear, I get a lot of questions about Shohei Ohtani. But if you're out there and you can wear something that identifies Antelope Valley College, you'd be amazed at the number of people who want to have a discussion about the college, maybe enrollment of classes and stuff like that. And I'm guessing I come across ten or fifteen, twenty students a year who enroll because we get to have that discussion, and they find out things, and I encourage them to, uh, to go to the college. Uh, so with all of that said, I just want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Congratulations, Michelle, on becoming president. Could be a fun year. And, uh, to all of the administrators, faculty, staff, and students, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Uh, thank you all. I just, uh, want to say thank you for electing me. I do appreciate that. Um, I want to wish everyone, I think it's really important for us to say a happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, and Merry Christmas. Please have happy holidays. Yes, I'm the president now. So our next meeting is January eighth, twenty twenty-four. I'm looking forward to seeing you all, and we are adjourned.
And everybody's got to sign for Patty.